All right, it's Tuesday, May twenty, two thousand twenty-five at six P M. We'll convene the city council's special meeting. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
I pause. Here.
Councilmember Curly.
Here.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Here.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Here.
Councilmember Shadlec.
Here.
All right, the first hearing, the public is open. Would anyone wish to be heard?
Uh, Councilor, East Point, Kelly Road. I, uh, I am not here to say that we don't need a new courtroom. We obviously, the courtroom is old. It probably needs to be a new courtroom. But I do want to approach the subject of crowding in the courtroom. And to make sure that this council understands that I don't think illegal immigrants are due, due process. The police should hand them directly over to ICE. They should not even make the courtroom. If the court has them, they should turn them over to ICE. And so I don't want to see our, our people pay for that. It's not our burden. We did not get due process when Joe Biden brought him in, or whoever was ruling the White House. So I don't think that there should be any illegal immigrants in the courtroom. They shouldn't be provided lawyers. They shouldn't be, they should be turned over to ICE. Cause they are illegal. And we don't have to bear the expense to give them due process. And our police do not really even have to give them to the courtroom. They can go straight to ICE. And that's what I want to say about the courtroom.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? All right, seeing none, the hearing of the public is closed. We'll move on to unfinished business, which is a discussion on thirty-eighth district court budget. Would anyone like to, I know we got some updated information. Would anyone like to open up the conversation on this?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. Should I guess, uh, I'll just get straight into the point. Uh, if you don't mind, I'd just like to see if, uh, can make a motion now. I'll make a motion that we approve if we're going from the original list again, since that one's in the, uh, in the packet here for today's meeting. Page six in the PDF. Just motion to approve numbers, uh, one and ten would be my motion.
Is there support?
Well, you said number one and number ten.
Yes, yes.
Did the last meeting, did we deal with, uh, the wages from, reduced from twenty dollars to eighteen dollars? Did we approve that the last? What did, bottom, what did we approve last time?
All, all but number one, two, and ten.
All right, so. So we're just at, so what you're doing is making a motion, adding one and ten, uh, along with the ones we already approved.
Yes, sir.
Yes, that's his motion.
Uh, uh, I'll, um, I'll support that motion.
All right, well, there's motion support. Does anyone have comments on it? So I, I guess I'll respond then. Um, I had some concerns. I actually did have one question. In terms of, that I'll drag to either, uh, well, to the judge or magistrate. For part-time, uh, for the magistrate wages, part-time, what hours were you seeking to have that position working? I think last year it was twenty hours a week.
Twenty hours a week, yes.
Okay. And are you asking, the request is for one oh four?
Yes.
And that would be, that's at the pay rate of a hundred a week then, or a hundred an hour, I'm sorry. Okay. I wanted to clarify that, um. Go ahead.
I thought I saw seventy-five dollars an hour somewhere. Did I, did I fix that up?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Can you speak in a mic? I can't hear you.
Okay, very good, sorry. The rate was established at a hundred dollars an hour. My magistrate now has additional responsibilities. We took a look at this after the wage study. And there was a path, personal action form, that gave him a hundred dollars an hour, signed off by, um, my former court administrator, Michael McLeod, former city manager, Mariah Walton. Last year in May, while I was at a conference, there was a path that was signed, um, by Michael McLeod, reducing the wages to fifty dollars an hour, with an email indicating to City Hall that that was so that we could try to capture some of the grant money for, to pay the, to pay the magistrate. And that as soon as the year was up, it was going to go back to the hundred dollars an hour. We took a hard look at the, at the wage study that was done by the city. And given the part-time nature, given the fact that the magistrate is not getting any kinds of benefits, no time off, um, no P T O, nothing like that, that we thought that seventy-five dollars was a fair rate. The rate is set by the judge, not by the city. The amount is set by the city, and the rate is set by the judge. We sent a personal action form over at the seventy-five dollars an hour. And, uh, city manager Walton refused to sign it. So that's a pending issue right now, that will be resolved, hopefully, with the involvement of scale, um, as to the, the actual wage. But what we're looking for is the amount, not the, not the rate of the one oh four, up to. And for the record, our magistrate has never gone to the max.
Never, never. He's never abused or anything like that.
So I'm gonna let, I'm gonna defer to my interim court administrator, since he, uh, is, uh, informed as to all these matters. If you need any additional information from me, I'm happy to chime in.
Does any other council members have, I guess, questions at this point? So I think my, my position on the magistrate wages is, we did have that wage study, and I know that, I know that we're in a, there's a little bit of a different situation over there, because you're picking up some of the administrative stuff as well, because that position, right now, is still vacant. That's right. Okay. I don't. I don't, so I don't think, at this point, I don't, I don't feel like I could justify supporting, um, essentially an amount that's almost akin to a full-time magistrate, and also for administrator. I would prefer to do something like, um, add, uh, Randy, what's the current amount in the proposed budget? Was it fifty-five?
Uh, there's fifty-five thousand for the magistrate, and ninety-four five hundred for the court administrator. Even though you guys approved it to one-ten last week, so one-ten plus fifty-five.
So I would prefer, personally, my, my preference would be to approve a line item for one sixty-five for both the positions, and kind of see how that plays out as the budget goes. If, uh, you know, it depends on what happens with that administrator. If they are able to find one quickly, then it might be something that we have to adjust, or at least have a conversation about. But if it's, if it's, uh, takes some time to fill that position, I think that would probably cover, um, us for the time being, at least for the next year. I mean, essentially, I'd rather authorize a lump sum, and then leave it to the court to say, divvy it up how you want, and, and whatever the pay, whatever pay rates that means, or anything like that, and just sort of get us out of that part of the conversation. But that said, it, you know, I do think my position is, it would be less than what the current ask is for.
I guess, oh, I was just gonna say, I, I guess my concern about that is, I guess we just have to switch back to something slightly different than if we do hire a full-time court administrator. Yeah, if it's left as it is now, we, of course, won't hit those limits, but then once there is someone full-time, then it's more accurate, instead of switching back next year, even if it was like the full year like that, or.
Yeah, and I guess.
A portion of the year.
Yeah, what I'm looking at, and what's sort of weighing on me with that, is, is just the comparables from, like, the wage study. So, no, understanding that the expectation is twenty hours a week for a magistrate. I know that's not exactly what he's doing right now, but, uh, because he's doing a bit more, but, um, funding what would, uh, like, what we would expect to be that cost. So, I guess I would make a, um, well, we already upped it to one-ten. So Randy, uh, do we need a motion to combine those into one line item? Or is that something that we can just?
We can leave them as separate line items, a- as long as the court understands it's a bucket of money that they have to live with.
Well, I, the reason I ask is, I don't want them to have to come to us to switch between the line items.
Right.
So if, is, is it just, if there's an understanding that you guys can, you're not bound by that particular line item between the two?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
So it's been approved for one-ten for the court administrator?
Yes.
And then you said, what, sixty-five?
The fifty-five that's in there?
Right.
Um, I would want to just add that in with, well, essentially, I would like to leave what was proposed at fifty-five, with the understanding that the one-ten can be sort of transferred between those two.
Well, because, like, as I indicated, uh, last week, we had an unpaid consultant come in and, uh, made some recommendations, and, uh, you know, one-ten to get the kind of person that, uh, needed for the busiest district court in the state of Michigan. Hopefully, we'll do it, but I'm not sure.
Are, are you saying you think the one-ten is low?
Oh, I think we have to go with it right now, but I'm just saying, my gut feeling is it may have to go higher.
Is that job posted already, or is there a search going on right now?
Uh, we've just finished the, uh, job description, and it's quite detailed. And, uh, you know, it will be posted soon.
So, um, what was the request from the court on that? I thought the request was one-ten. Am I incorrect on that?
No, you are correct. It was one-ten on that.
Okay.
For magistrate's wages. And, um, I, I know I said I was turning it over to my court administrator, but my thought process, um, let's say we get the court administrator, they're gonna be a court administrator, and a court administrator only, uh, because our court needs that. So when that time comes, the issue is, we have a part-time magistrate, and it really is beneficial for us to have a part-time magistrate and a court administrator, because during the day when magistrate is doing the arraignments, while I'm in the other courtroom, doing my state cases, city cases, civil cases, the desk is empty at the court administrator's office. So we want to make sure that we fill that. If we fill that, then there's gonna create a gap with magistrate, because we've been able to use the visiting judge for arraignments on Fridays, which I work on Fridays. We'll address that shortly. But that's gonna be the concern, is getting enough hours, um, money available for hours for our magistrate. And the line item of a hundred and four thousand was approved two budgets in a row, until last year, and then it was cut down to fifty-five. So the question begs, what, what changed over that time period to cut it in half? Or from one oh four to fifty-five, and then again this year? So when our magistrate was hired, he was hired after approved by city council, for that permanent position at twenty hours, at a hundred dollars an hour. So it creates a real issue, um, as far as, that's what we hired him at and for, and with the blessing of council. Why is it now half? That's my two cents. I'm gonna sit down again and let, um, my court administrator take over.
Are there any other questions? I, I guess my response to that would be, I know that when, uh, uh, the current judge took over, there was a large backlog, and I think that was a part of the considerations, uh, especially with COVID and stuff, but we're kind of on the other side of that now, or at least mostly. And I, I know, you know, I, I can't speak for really what previous councils have done. I just can only make decisions based on the information that's given to us today. So that's just my response, but, um, so I, I would make a motion to amend the current, uh, uh, motion to, uh, keep the, I guess, remove, uh, request number ten. You were, your motion was to include the two requests? Okay. That's my motion to amend. Is there support?
I have one quick question before. So just make sure I'm remembering correctly. Last week I asked, because the motion right now is to include pretty much everything, and now your amendment is to exclude number ten. So leaving in one, two, three.
It would leave in everything except for number two.
Except for number two?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I misunderstood you. Randy, I'm gonna ask, so taking out number two, like, I know I asked you last week, roughly, what would the, the financial impact would be? And you estimated about a hundred to fifty thousand in negative. Taking out number two, and leaving everything else in, are we able to do that without going into the negative? Or do you still see that as?
So just to clarify, the, the current motion does not include, there hasn't been a motion to approve the request for number two. So as it stands now.
Yes, yes, that's, that's what I was asking, with number two being removed.
Oh, gotcha.
How, how we say, okay, I'm sorry.
You're going from the original budget that had a slight surplus. Then this would put us into a deficit. I, I haven't added it up. I've been waiting for all the final approvals before I go through and do this. But it would take us from a, a small surplus to a, a deficit.
Even excluding number two?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is that the full general fund, you're saying?
Yes.
The full general fund budget?
Correct.
Okay.
I thought, uh, up, uh, through April, it was a million six, uh, Mr. Blum, that the court, uh, has, uh, transmitted over to the city. And isn't that less than the, uh, amount, uh, the court has spent?
They're asking about the expenditure side. The budget is set based on revenues and expenses. So the revenues are already accounted for. With, before any changes, we had a thirty-five thousand dollar surplus. The changes that council has now approved will throw general fund into a deficit, because there's no change in any of the revenues.
Two more months of revenue, though, don't we?
We're talking next fiscal year.
Okay, all right.
And if, if, just to make sure, I, I think everyone understands, I don't think Mr. Blum's speaking to, um, revenues or expenses just with regards to the court. I think he just means the entire.
Entire general budget.
Yeah.
Will we have discussion on number two, though?
Um, I, go and go, I think, get through this motion, and then find out if there's any further discussion. So my amendment did, did not have support. Any other council members wanna chime in?
So the main, the main motion, though, is dealing only with one and ten, correct?
Approving one and ten in my, my amendment would have said, would have essentially said only approve number one. All right, uh, if there's no other comments, I'll call the roll.
For the original motion?
Yep.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly? Mayor Kleinfeld?
No.
Councilmember Shadlec?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
No.
All right, motion passes. Uh, item two was the only, uh, you had just asked about that, was the only item that really wasn't addressed. Uh, at this point, with, with the new courthouse coming, and I think we've approved essentially all the other requests, um, I think it's okay to have a little give and take. I would not want to approve those positions at this time. And I see you standing up, so if you would like to say something, go ahead.
I got a few things to say, too, but go ahead, Judge.
With regard to that request, as I indicated at the last meeting, we have six grant employees through the end of the year. So I'm not really concerned until the end of the year. I just want to make sure that, uh, at that time, if we need the additional employees, that we can table it and come back to council and say, this is where we're at, and, you know, we need it. We don't need it today. We don't need it next month. But at the end of the year, we may need it. So, um, in the spirit of give and take, I would table that issue and ask that we be allowed to come back at the end of the year, see where we're at, and readdress the matter.
Well, I think at any time, uh, the court could submit a request for a budget amendment to, you know, the city. I don't see any reason that, that couldn't happen. Councilman Curly, it looked like you might have had a comment, and I didn't want to cut you off.
No, uh, well, not a comment, a question. I, I keep hearing that we approved everything on this list except number two. I, I don't remember doing any, any of that. I mean, did we, did we approve, um, the office furniture? Did we approve the telecommunications? Did we approve, um, overtime wages?
Yes, at the last, so at the budget meeting, what we did is, the things that we kind of felt we were all in agreement on, we said, all right, we're just gonna give them those items, not kind of like, argue over those, and table the couple of things that we didn't get to.
Okay, so this motion passed that, uh, we just had. So we're, we are basically, one through eleven, we approved everything except hiring two full-time people.
Correct.
Okay. All right. I have other questions, but on a different subject.
Okay. All right. So at this point, um, one through eleven, except for two, uh, of the requests were approved. Unless there's a, a motion from council that wants to approve it, I think that's kind of the end of the discussion. Does anyone want to make a motion?
Motion to do what?
To approve number two. All right. I think that kind of.
Yes, we'll table that.
I think that, uh, kind of concludes the discussion. So, uh, at this point, if, if, do any council members have any further comments to make?
No comments, or I have questions?
Oh, if you have questions, go ahead.
Did we get into, help me out, Mayor and Council, um, the overtime?
We approved, uh, increasingly amount allotted for overtime.
Why am I not remembering all this stuff? Forgot. Had nothing to do with my age. So we, we kept it at seventeen thousand?
I think we increased it seventeen thousand to twenty.
Yeah, the city proposed three thousand, court proposed twenty, and we went with the twenty.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, um, well, this is a special meeting, pretty short. We have no new business. Mayor and council reports, uh, Councilman Baker.
I'm good, nothing.
Councilman Curly?
No.
Uh, Councilman DeMonico?
Nothing.
Councilwoman Shadlec?
Nothing.
I have nothing. Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Uh, I'll make the motion, sir, but did the administration mail or deliver or whatever to the council and the mayor exactly what we did in the last two sessions? I mean, that's not, is, is that, that's not attainable, and we can't do that? Ken?
If I may, um, it, sorry, it should be in the minutes, um, the, the vote, the discussion. Um, but then everything would be finalized at the June budget hearings, correct, Mr. Blum?
The second meeting in, in June is where you'll see the final numbers. I can get them out early, but that's when it'll be officially approved.
All right.
Okay, I, I don't need it then. I'll wait till June.
Is there a motion?
I second his, his motion to adjourn.
Sorry.
Do we have public time at the end here or?
Not at the end of this meeting. But we, I don't know if you want to hang around, we have at the beginning of the next meeting, if you, if you want to make public comments during the meeting. I mean, if council's fine with it, I don't mind just kind of going off the agenda and letting them speak. Go ahead.
What I'd like to do is read a letter into the record and I would ask council to receive and file this letter.
Okay.
To honorable Mayor Kleinfeld and members of the East Point City Council. Dear Mayor Kleinfeld and members of the council, I respectfully request that this letter be read into public record to address and correct a number of misleading and incorrect statements included in the agenda material for the May 20th, 2025 special meeting, particularly as they relate to the 38th District Court and the Honorable Judge Kathleen Galen. First, the statement made by the finance director claiming that the judge during her presentation referenced using a visiting judge every Friday for her docket and being concerned about the grant running out, the cost to the city for the judge not working on Fridays will cost the city $20,000 per year is not correct and is misleading. The comments made by the judge were in relation to the court losing six part-time grant-funded staff at the end of the year when the grant ends and the need to replace these positions with the requested two full-time additional staff. Judges are entitled to vacation and personal time consistent with the policies and oversight of the state court administrative office scale. Any scheduling, including days off, is subject to monitoring and compliance with statewide judicial standards. To be clear, Judge Galen does in fact work the majority of Fridays. Fridays are often set aside for complex matters such as murder, preliminary examinations, multi-defendant cases and other lengthy proceedings that require more uninterrupted time than is feasible during standard docket day. On occasions when the judge is not on the bench, she handles chief judge and administrative responsibilities, legal research and case review. She also has to write opinions too, significant amount. Judicial work frequently extends beyond the courtroom and outside of regular business hours. It is important to clarify that the grant-funded judge referenced is paid entirely through a designated grant, not from city funds. Therefore, no financial burden is shifted to this city as a result of this arrangement. One must question why such a claim was made at all. Unfortunately appears this statement may have been included to cast the judge in a negative light. I am deeply concerned that this narrative is being advanced by the finance director in his memo dated May 20th, 2025. This raises serious concerns about impartiality and appropriateness. Second, the remarks included under the magistrate slash visiting judge section of the memorandum unfairly imply that the judge is either failing to perform her duties or is attempting to shift her workload. This could not be further from the truth. The judge manages an extremely high-volume docket and continues to do so with professionalism and dedication, including taking work home in order to meet the overwhelming demands. Objective caseload data shows that the 38th District Court handles nearly double the number of felony cases as our neighboring sister court in Sinclair Shores, which has two judges. Any assertion that the judge is not carrying her share of the work is categorically incorrect and undermines the integrity of the court. Lastly, these comments are not only incorrect, but irrelevant to the limited purpose of the special council meeting which has, which was to address three remaining fiscal issues not approved at the May 13th, 2025 budget workshop. I respectfully request that all negative and incorrect comments relating to the court and the judge be formally stricken from the record as they serve no purpose but to disparage an elected official and mislead this governing body. It is essential that the city council be given clear, correct and objective information on which to base its decisions. These remarks unfortunately do not meet that standard. We all share a common interest in ensuring transparent and accountability and accountable city operations. This commitment must include refraining from disseminating information that is incorrect, misleading or personally motivated. I would like the discussion to remain focused on the three issues properly scheduled for this special meeting and not be derailed by unrelated incorrect or prejudicial assertions. Mark Jimakowski, interim court administrator. I have an original of the letter, if the court would, the court, the council would receive and file this.
Can you leave, at least leave us a copy of that and what I'm going to do, because we typically don't add actions or our rules don't let us add any agenda items, I'll ask to add that to our next meeting and receive and file it at 7 o'clock, so.
And my last comment is thank you to each of you. I hope to be a, a good judge for our community and I appreciate the help that you've given the court to get there.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, do we have a motion and support?
Yep.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Motion, your motion to adjourn, she's taking roll. Your motion to adjourn, she's taking roll.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
All right, meeting adjourned at 6:34.